City Council's Virtual Planning Committee today, which is being hosted from Liverpool Town Hall. I'll bring the Chair in shortly just to say hello and to start proceedings. But before we do so, I do need to conduct a few brief technical checks to make sure everything's operating correctly. So I'll deal with the Chair firstly. Council Brian, welcome. Could you confirm he can hear us okay?
I can hear you okay and welcome to everybody who's in attendance today.
Thank you. That's perfect. Next, to those members who've joined us in the chamber. Firstly, to the Deputy Chair, Council of Conception, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, yes, Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Council Hanson, can you hear us okay?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Council Radford, if you'd just touch your mic please.
Indeed.
Thank you. Moving on to those members who've joined us remotely. Deputy Chair, Council Thompson, good morning.
Good morning. Yes, I can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Kennedy?
Yes, everything's fine.
Thank you. Council Marat?
Everything's fine, Michael. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you, Billy. Council Cummings?
Good morning and everything is fine.
Perfect. And lastly, Council Juarez?
Yes, good morning.
That's excellent. Thank you, everyone. Just before we start moving to business, I can confirm I have one set of apologies received today from councillor Anthony Lovell. In terms of the actual running order for today's meeting, I have no notifications of any changes to the order of business. So we're dealing with items before us in the order as per the published agenda. In terms of the conduct of business today, the Chair or myself will announce each item of business in turn. In the event that there's an agent or applicant or indeed any images to display, then those will be displayed on screen and my colleague will move those slides on appropriately. For agents and applicants, as your slides are displayed on screen, if you give an indication as to when you want the slide to move, my colleague will do so directly for you. And at the end of when you have spoken, please pause so members of the committee may wish to ask questions of you. And we allow up to five minutes for those who are presenting. There were a number of speakers present today who were here purely for question purposes only. So for those items, whilst there are images and slides on screen there, the agent or applicant is only there to answer questions and not to give a presee of the application via the presentation. Those speakers who are present who object, just to confirm, we will again call you forward one by one for each item of business. And again, at that point, if you just unmute your microphone and switch your webcam on, and then you will be able to address committees for up to three minutes. Once you've done so, please, can you just pause briefly in case any members of the committee wished to have a question? Before I continue, Council Radford has a brief question.
Just going to say, bearing in mind it's quite hard for people in long term, I think we all focus on that. Is there any way we could take in any license where there's any significant number of objectors? I know there might be a few for tin wool, but I'm not saying that with any particular site in mind. I'm just saying, if we've got objectors, is it, would it be best to bring their items up? Save them getting logged in.
Thank you, Council Radford. As ever, that's a valid point and it is raised quite often by members in our proceedings. As you know by the agenda, we have a number of applications before us, some 13 planning applications today. The majority of our applications today don't have speakers. For the first four applications, we have only agents or architects present to deliver presentations with no objectors. As we move further through the agenda, the two items to which yours will council for, we have a speaker and an objector in terms of your colleague, councillor Lake. Further on on the agenda are remaining speakers of item number 12. Given the limited number of speakers and with the agreement to the Chair, I would suggest we maintain our order of business at this stage. However, if there's any need to change it later on, then that's a matter of discretion to the Chair to exercise. But thank you for raising the point. Chair, just to move us on briefly, we now need to deal with any declaration of interest from colleagues. So do members have any to declare, please? Council Radford?
Just the two tin-woled items I'd like to speak on as a resident.
Thank you, Council Radford. Council Juarez?
Yes, I'd like to declare a non pecuniary interest on item five. Also, I would like to speak on the application, please. And also, I won't be able to stay for the whole duration of the meeting today as I've got other commitments. So I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other, any further interest to declare? No? Trish, are you indicating to declare or just?
I'm just unmuting myself, Mike.
Thank you, Trish. Okay, moving on through the agenda. Item number two, minutes of our last virtual meeting, which are on pages four to 21 of your agenda. Thank you, everyone. Those are agreed. Item number three, edge in business, I have none to report. So with the agreement to the Chair, we'll move on to our first item, which is number four, which relates to land bounded by Grattan Street, Hill Street and Bratty Street, Liverpool eight in Riverstone. Chair, if you'd like to invite our speakers through.
I'd like to invite Daniel Demani to present to the planning committee now in favour of the application. Daniel, are you there? Can you unmute?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
Yeah. If you'd like to start your presentation now, please.
It was just to start the slides and just really go to answer any questions if there is any on us.
Oh, I see. Well, that's what I was told originally, Daniel, that you'd be here to answer any questions. But then it came up on my tabled note that you wanted to present. No, that's clear. You're here to answer any questions. So in that case, I'd like to hand over to our planning officer now to present on this application.
Chair, thank you very much. Fergal McEvoy, team leader for the city centre development management team. Members, you may aware this application was before you back in the eighth of October of last year, where you resolved to grant planning permission subject to the and applicants entering into section 106 agreement for a mixed commercial and residential development between four stories and eight stories high, consisting of 296 residential units. This followed on from a previous planning permission on the site back in 26, which you granted in 2016. The alterations to the scheme that you previously approved in October 2019 are detailed in items one to eight in the description of development in today's report. Subsequent to the application being considered by yourselves back in October of last year, the applicants have provided additional information to discharge a number of conditions attached to your original application, which, as I say, was considered previously in 2016. The approved recommendation for this application therefore includes conditions which are no longer applicable as those details have already been approved. There'll be no changes to the scheme since it was considered by yourselves back in October 2019. The current report seeks only to approve a varying number of conditions attached to the original recommendation. Those proposed alterations to conditions total relate to eight conditions and the changes outlined are detailed in paragraph 1.3 of today's officer's report. It is considered that these revisions, which have no impact on the proposed development in terms of scale and massing, are both necessary and appropriate to ensure the successful completion of the scheme. And in effect, in the scheme that you previously considered back in October last year, there are no changes to it other than the alterations of those said conditions, Chair. That's the only reason the item is for your consideration today because officers haven't got delegated reports to alter these conditions.
Thank you for that, Fergal. Now, are there any questions?
Council Conception?
Thanks, Fergal. Could I just, could you just clarify the position relation to section 106 money? Is there any money today?
Okay, Chair, just, there is a reduction in the amount of section 106 payable. That is detailed, I think, in section seven of the report in front of you. It should be in the tabled notes. As I say, this application, there's no alterations to the scheme that you considered previously last October, other than the changing of a number of conditions. Everything else remains the same that you previously resolved to grant planning permission for.
And I think councillor Kennedy has a question.
Yeah, just, just in reference to one of the conditions was about the starting date and it was judged that development had started and therefore that condition was going to be removed. However, it's not unknown in planning applications throughout my time on the council that people stick a spade in the ground and something is said to have begun. What I'm concerned about is that are there any conditions regarding progress on the scheme, which would hopefully speed things along?
If you'd like to answer, maybe Daniel would come in on that one as well.
Yeah, Chair, thank you.
We have made a significant start on site in relation to the original approved scheme from 2016. Blocks A and D, which face onto Grafton Street, have foundations and majority of the structural steelwork in place. And at the moment, there's concrete slabs being bored on site in relation to these two blocks. So we have made significant starts on site and excavations are almost complete as well on the remainder of the site. So it has been progressing and as briefly as what Ms McEvoy has mentioned, that we have the stars pre commencement conditions in relation to the original application. And that most of the changes affects the remaining blocks which are due to start once the approval is finalised. We're geared up to start on those blocks and still those.
Is there anything, Fergal?
No, Chair, nothing to add to what Daniel's just said there.
Yeah. So I hope that answers your question, councillor Kennedy.
Yeah, that's fine.
I can't see anybody else indicating. So I'd like to move that the application be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Just to quickly conduct a vote on this. To confirm, please, Trish?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Juarez?
Agreed.
Council Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Cummings? Thank you. Council Conception?
Agreed.
Council Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you. And Council Radford? Just to confirm the outcome of the vote was unanimous, all members present voting in favour, we'll therefore move on to our next item of business. Agenda item number five related to numbers one to 11 Spitfire Road, Liverpool 24 in Allerton and Hunts Cross Ward. Just before images are displayed on their site, on the on-screen rather, to confirm, Council Juarez has indicated at the start of our meeting that she has declared a non pecuniary interest and while she will be speaking in due course, she will not be voting therefore on the application being spoken. So Chair, over.
And I also heard Alisa Mathiason. Now, does she want to speak or is she just here? As Daniel wants to answer questions, is she actually here? Or maybe leaves us to do with the next item six? Michael, I think maybe she's to do with item six.
Correct. If I can ask colleagues to display any images if we have any available on terms of PowerPoint, just to assist. Thank you. I think it'd be appropriate at this juncture for the case officer to talk through the images on screen, after which I believe Council Juarez has also asked to comment as well.
Yes. So the police officer would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Stuart Clark here, team leader of the South team. This application is before you today purely because of the section 106 obligation. Otherwise, it would have been dealt with under delegated powers. It's an application for industrial units on a site that's allocated for industrial purposes. It's wholly in accordance with your policies in terms of principle. And the elevations and the design of the units are typical of what you would expect for industrial units. And the application's been carefully considered by the head of highways and transportation, who's happy that the, the application is, will not have any detrimental impact on the local highway network and there's adequate parking and servicing arrangements associated with it. That your officers welcome this application on an allocated site for employment generating uses. All the issues are dealt with in the report, Chair, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for our police officer?
Chair, if we could bring in Council Juarez to speak first before I bring in Council Radford from the chamber.
All right, Council Juarez, if you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, I'm quite, I'm quite supportive of this application. I quite welcome the investment to the area, also the job opportunities that the, that the scheme will bring will be quite, it will be quite beneficial to local residents who want to work and live locally. So, you know, I would ask the committee this morning to approve the application on, as I, as I think, you know, it's going to be beneficial to the city and beneficial to South Liverpool. The, the area is industrial, so it's fit for purpose and there's really good connectivity roads to, to the site. So I really do not see any problems with, with the committee being able to approve the application today. That's all I want to say. I'm fully in favour of the application.
Thank you, Council Juarez. Now, I believe that Council Radford has indicated that he wants to speak, although I can't see a hand. Council Radford, would you like to come on?
Morning, Chairman. Thank you. And all it was, was to ask, on page 54, it does detail Japanese knotweed work will be needed doing. Will the, will the applicants liaise with adjoining properties? Because the problem with Japanese knotweed is often it can contaminate one area of land. They dig down or chemically treat that land over a one or three year period depending which approach they use. But the cross infection of Japanese knotweed may affect or come back in from the adjoining properties. So just wanted really to ask if there's been any liaison with the adjoining properties or adjoining landholders and if the Japanese knotweed is just within the site or is on the parameter. That's just a practical problem, question.
So, would you like to see if you can answer us on this one?
All I would add there, Chair, is that the application's been assessed by Merseyside Environmental Advisory Service, who deal with things such as Japanese knotweed. And if you look on page 54 of your papers, there's a small paragraph that relates to it. And they submitted a report part of the application in connection with this. And it will require a full method statement in terms of the location of invasive plants. May I have accepted this document as being appropriate and acceptable and they would have had regard to impacts on any abhorrent sites as well, Chair?
I hope that answers the question for you, Council Radford. As we all know, it's a very pernicious weed. It's come up before, but they will need to follow the regulations set down by the government on chemical treatment, I would have thought. Okay, so can I move that this application be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Just to remind members that we do have to conduct a vote individually for purposes of a regulatory committee. So firstly, Chair, your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Juarez? Not voting, of course. Council Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you. Council Cummings?
You already asked me?
Apologies, Dave. Working from my list. Apologies. Council Kennedy?
Again, agreed.
Thank you. Council Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. Now we move to our chamber. Council Hanson firstly.
Agreed.
Council Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you. To confirm the outcome is eight in favour, one not voting by virtue of an interest, no abstentions. The application is approved. We move on to our next item, which is item number six, a land between Penny Lane Emporium and number 601 to 603 Smith Down Road, Liverpool 18 in Waver Tree Ward. Chair?
On this one, I do have two people, but I can't see. That's why I asked earlier. Lisa Mathiason on my list. So we do have Joanne Mills who would like to speak, who I have seen on the list of participants.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members. Yeah, I've been asked to actually present the application on the agent who works on behalf of the applicant.
If you'd like to go ahead, Joanne, sorry.
Okay, sorry. And basically what I wanted to do first of all is just provide a brief overview of the site. If we can just go on to the first slide. As you can see from the OS insert, the site, the land previously formed part of the bus depot, which also occupied the adjacent Penny Lane neighbourhood centre. And from preliminary site investigations, it appears that this section of the site was formerly used to repair the buses. And the building occupied the full footprint of the site. There's, there's limited planning history available from the site and as such, it's unclear whether the bus demo, when the bus demo was actually demolished. However, as most residents are aware, the site has lain empty for a great number of years, probably since the beginning, at least the beginning of the 1990s. Therefore, given the site's prominent location within the main shopping centre, it can only be presumed that the complexities of remediating the site has resulted in the lack of any development coming forward to date. As the site has lain vacant for a number of years, we were aware that its developments would generate considerable public interest. Therefore, the main consideration when progressing the scheme has been to ensure consistent and meaningful engagement with the planners and ward councillors. And to this end, we ensure that both parties were involved early in the process. This early engagement has helped shape the design as now fully presented. As you can see from slide one, while the site is located in a highly sustainable location with close links to high frequency bus services, the scheme also provides just under 75% of parking spaces and 100% cycle parking. The newly formed access road also allows bin lorries, emergency vehicles and service delivery vehicles to access the site without the need to park on road. Internally, all apartments exceed nationally described space standards with level access provided at all entrances and a lift to all floors. If we can go on to slide two, please. And as you can see, slide two clearly indicates that the massing of the building has been considered, not just from the perspective of the adjacent residential properties, but also from the wider street scene. As you can see from this view, which is taken from Church Road, looking across the shopping centre, block B sits comfortably within the site with its massing comparable to the surrounding properties. If we can go on to slide three, please. Slide two clearly indicates, sorry, slide three, as indicated on this slide, the angles have been winded in order to enhance the privacy of the adjacent properties. But it also helps to provide some visual interest as well as you walking through that path. Obviously, this, this is seen, we see this as, as another main elevation and not just the, taken from Smith Down Road, but if you're walking through the path, obviously you want to, to be able to view the building fully. And with adding these extra features, we consider that it doesn't just present a blank frontage. And we can go on to scale on slide four, please. The design of the development has been guided by the surrounding built form, but we've also taken into consideration the comments and examples provided by the end design officer and planning officer. The scheme places an emphasis on the vertical rhythm of the surrounding terrace properties with a defined window hierarchy, which includes large shop front style windows separated by substantial brick piece which helps to ground the building. Additional detailing is provided with use of horizontal banding, brink projections and the use of multi-tonal bricks. If we can go on to slide five now, please. In addition to the benefits already touched upon, the scheme will assist in opening up the existing public footpath, which is currently enclosed and oppressive. As you can see from slide five, it's proposed to install lower level railings along the section of site which runs adjacent to this footpath and to include low level lighting. Alongside these enhancements, the scheme was, is also proposed carefully considered planting scheme along the footpath and within the site, which has been discussed with the land safety officer as part of the planning process. And with the placement of the building into the site and the arrangement of windows along this elevation, the footpath will be a more safer, more appealing through route for pedestrians. To sum up, the scale, massing and design of the buildings have been carefully considered, taking into account the surrounding built form and following advice taken from the council's planning officer. As such, we consider the scheme greatly improves the environment of the site and surrounding area by removing a long-term vacant and derelict site located on the main road frontage and which has required much needed improvement for a great many years. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Joanne. And I really did appreciate those images because they explained very well what I had written down in my notes. And I think the improvements look very good. So are there any questions? I think I had Council Cummings. So we'll have you first, please, Dave.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for that presentation overall. I'm really very much impressed with the presentation. I like what you've done with regard to the public pathway. And that's what you said, that derelict land has been derelict from the late 1980s, from what I can recall. So it's very much needed. Could you just elaborate a little bit more around the issues of what local residents have said about the lack of the sunlight issue with people on Kenyon Road? Could you just elaborate a little bit more on that issue, please?
The building's actually moved in. Because of where we're placed, the orientation of the buildings won't actually cause any more overshadowing. That already happens. Because of the orientation, because of the way that the property sits on Kenyon Road, which I think is covered in the office reports as well. It will actually not involve any overshadowing to those windows. But we were careful. I mean, the main issue that we had when facing onto Kenyon Road was more of an issue of privacy and whether or not, because the site's been empty for such a long time and we're introducing a residential scheme, whether that will cause concerns. And so our focus has been on trying to maintain a maximum interface that we could, but while also making sure that we angle windows so that the future residents are afforded an outlook, but that the privacy of those residents is also maintained.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Joanne. Yes, it was in the report partially, but it's nice to have it expanded upon. And I did feel that the angling of the windows really helped the overall appearance to break up the block. So I think it's a bit of a win-win, that one. Are there any other questions for our presenter before I hand over to the case officer? No. Can I hand over to our case officer to speak on this? And I know you're going to bring up the councillor comment that I got before this.
And have done so formally also. The developers worked very closely with ward councillors since the concept began. They have listened to our advice and supported our requests for development of the site. The Brownfield site has been derelict for many years and invites antisocial behaviour and fly tipping. The landscaping and improvement to pathway for walking to the shopping centre is desperately needed and would certainly assist in the regeneration of this part of Waver Tree. So in terms of the application, Chair, you've had a very detailed presentation from the agent and you've got a very detailed report. So I don't intend to revisit that in any great detail other than to say, as you've heard, this has been a long vacant site that has been largely hoarded up for the last 20 to 30 years. It creates a very oppressive environment for people wanting to walk from Penny Lane Shopping Centre through to Smith Down Road. This scheme will open up that and make it a much more inviting route. It will bring the site back into productive use. The design has been worked on with the applicant to ensure that there's no detrimental impact on the amenity of nearby occupiers. The site's been carefully considered and the application being considered by the head of highways and transportation in relation to the parking ratios and he's satisfied that, given the numbers provided and its accessible location, it's a scheme that he's capable of supporting. Yeah, there's not a lot more I can add, Chair, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Can't see anybody indicating. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, same procedure as before. Firstly, your vote please Trish.
Agreed.
Councillor Conception. Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson. You councillor Kennedy.
Is that me? Sorry, agreed. I didn't quite catch it.
Councillor Manath.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
Thank you and lastly councillor. Thank you, just to confirm the outcome of the vote is unanimous, all members in favour, therefore the application is agreed. And we move on to our next item of business, number seven, which relates to the land at the corner of Walton Breck Road and Bailey Road South Liverpool four in Everton Wood.
And I'd like to invite the agent to present to the committee on this. I have Deborah Baker Barnett registered on my note.
Yes, I'm here.
If you'd like to go ahead Deborah please.
Yes, thank you Chair. My name is Deborah Baker Barnett, I'm the agent for this application and an associate at Zeram. I don't intend to take up too much of your time. We've worked with officers to reach the positive recommendation. It's a well considered scheme providing forty eight apartments and two commercial units for localised need along with thirty eight parking spaces. The design takes inspiration from the local context and proposes a sympathetic new modern element. The orientation and the placing of the building has been a collaboration with the council and we responded to the design specialist comments. And we amended the scheme accordingly by moving the building line forward as shown in the next slide I believe, while still allowing for a suitable widening of the footpath. The scheme responds to its designation as a primarily residential area and it also corresponds to the aims of the Anfield Spatial Regeneration Framework. Can we have the next slide? Thank you, so yeah, this shows the alignment of the scheme. The development also benefits from a small area of open space and there's a park also within around a five minute walking distance. And in summary, it will present a high quality scheme for occupiers and will uphold amenity for existing residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Deborah for that. Are there any questions?
Chair councillor Rafferty has a question.
No, it's not answered.
Thank you Chair, and just two questions. You're talking about a local community park. Going to be honest, we've got a lot of very small playing community parks in various parts of the city, which has just been neglected and become a dumping ground, an area of ASB. Who's actually going to be in charge of maintenance of this open space? And has it been designed from a security point of view? And that's one question. Totally separate question is, there really has been, I've had a lot of feedback that when the council did the demolitions in the area, a lot of the properties didn't have the drains sealed so that it actually created a terrific environment for the spread of rats. Is there any rat baiting or any rat control issues you'll do before construction takes place?
Thank you for that. Can I hand over to you first Deborah? And maybe if you can't answer all the questions, the case officer might be able to enlighten us in a minute. But if you deal with whatever you can from those series of questions please.
Yes, thank you Chair. I believe in terms of, well, in terms of security and maintenance, security obviously is something that we would want to achieve for the residents. And both that and the maintenance would be secured by condition. In terms of the drainage, that's not something that I'm aware of, but it would be reviewed and addressed as part of the construction process, pre-construction process.
Thank you Deborah. Are there any other questions for the agent? Before we hand over to our case officer. I can't see anybody indicating, so I hand over now to the case officer, who might be able to also address possibly the issue about vermin.
Yeah, good morning Chair, Members, Members of the public. My name is John Hayes, I am the team leader for Development Management in the north of the city. Chair, obviously you've got a very full report and had the presentation from the applicant's agent there, which explains, I think, in some detail what the proposal is about and the relationship with surrounding dwellings and so on. So I don't propose to say a great deal more than what you've already heard. In relation to the specific issue that's raised by councillor Radford, in relation to drainage, there are conditions suggested in the report that address drainage. So there is requirement to submit a drainage strategy, foundation surface water drainage strategy prior to commencement of development. And then in relation to the rats, I think that is an issue that has been brought to our attention in the past. I'm not sure that it is something that we would ordinarily put planning conditions on to address the matter. But I think if Members felt that it was necessary, we could perhaps put an informative on, any permission to highlight the issue to the applicants and to see if they can liaise with colleagues perhaps in our environmental health to see if they can come up with a strategy. But I don't think it's necessary as a planning condition, but more as an information note. Chair, just a couple of other things. There are some slight errors, I'm afraid, within the report and some slight matters that just need a quick reference. So condition two hasn't listed all the plans, I'm afraid, so obviously that will need updating. Condition thirteen also needs updating to reflect the amount of commercial floor space within the condition. And then in relation to the amount of commuted sun, again, there's some slight errors in the box. It's actually correct in the recommendation, but the open space amount in the box refers to forty six thousand pound. It's clearly forty eight thousand pound, given it's one thousand pound per unit. So subject to those slight amendments Chair, happy to recommend approval and of course happy to answer any additional questions that you or Members may have. Thank you.
So are there any questions?
Chair councillor Rafferty has indicated another question please.
Councillor Manath.
On the rat issue, I think just a request to the agent, I think would be quite sufficient and thanks John for his comments. On the shopping area, I'm really welcome the fact we're extending the footpath frontage. I think that's going to be welcome, knowing how much footfalls in the area. Is there any provision for any cycle racks? Because there's, you know, the councils are spending a lot of money in creating cycle lanes, but you've got nowhere to park when you arrive there. Is there any cycle racks being built into the scheme? And maybe could some of the section one oh six be used to put the cycle racks into the paving area to complement our objectives?
Would the post officer like to come back on that one?
Yes Chair, I am just checking to see whether or not there's anything in the conditions or whether there's anything being recommended by our colleagues in highways. I'm not aware, just checking through the conditions, that there is any requirement specifically to provide cycle parking. I think possibly the applicant may be able to provide clarification as to whether or not there is cycle parking within the development. I think councillor Radford is more specifically referring to the sort of on-street cycle parking, which would be a different a different matter and that will be for colleagues in highways.
I'll stop you there because we've got an intervention here from the Leaguewood Department. So I'll come out and invite Roger Mann to speak now please. Roger, would you like to come in?
Yes, beg your pardon Chair. Yeah, so it was just in relation to the informative, but I think councillor Radford's clarified that he doesn't want that informative attached. But I would have been concerned about that in case it potentially blighted the development because having that permanently on the record is something without sort of proper evidence in relation to that issue. But I think councillor Radford said he wouldn't require that now anyway. Thanks.
Yeah, that's true. So now we're just left with the issue which hasn't been considered about we have the cycle back there. So I don't know if highways could pick up on this request.
Yeah, thanks Chair, Andy Dingwall, House Development Control Team Leader. And we have assessed this application carefully and there is a good provision of cycle parking within the development site itself and that affords the opportunity for residents, you know, employees of the commercial unit to utilise those cycle storage facilities. On the drawings, there's no specific details with regard to cycle racks being provided on the footway outside. However, if the applicant's agreeable and Members also are agreeable, we can include an element within the off-site highway condition to provide maybe three or four Sheffield cycle stands on the footway outside. And those can be provided as part of the off-site highway works, which will be covered under section two seven eight agreement when the development comes to be implemented.
Going back to you Deborah Baker Barnett, would you be prepared, you know, to provide something like this? I know you weren't originally asked about it. It seems a bit irregular, but obviously it could come out with section one oh six monies.
Yes, I'm sure this is something that we could provide, that we could address, yes.
Thank you very much for that Deborah, and I'm sure you've taken into account what's been said about the vermin and you'll take account of that too.
Absolutely.
So I don't seem to have anybody else indicating. So I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved on the understanding that we are going to have consideration about the cycle racks. So is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, just to confirm your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Cummings. Thank you councillor Hanson. Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Manath.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Juarez.
Agreed.
Thank you and lastly councillor Rafferty. Thank you colleagues, the vote is unanimous and the application is therefore approved on that basis. We'll now move on to agenda item number eight, which relates to numbers thirty one to thirty three, Timworld Hill, Liverpool thirteen, which is in Chubuk and Stony Croft Ward. And as you will recall, as started proceedings, councillor Radford has indicated will be speaking on this as local ward councillor and as such will not be quoting on the item concerned as well. So over to you Chair.
So I believe we have Linda Wright to present for this application to planning committee. Linda, would you like to come in now?
Good morning and thank you Chair. Well, this is new, isn't it? Not done this before. Thank you for that, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm representing the applicant in this matter, thirty one to thirty three. As you know from your planning report that you will go into later, this is a change of use from a former day nursery to nine flats. One two bed flat, the rest are one beds. Nursery previously catered for sixty children. So it's quite an intensive use of the premises and it was formerly a pair of semis, as you will hear, I would imagine from your planning officer. The proposal has been reduced a couple of times, the applicant has worked with the planning officers, it has been reduced. There is now a much smaller rear extension and you can see that now on your screens on the right hand side in red. There is a raising of the ridge of the roof of the properties to naught point eight metres raising. And then there's also a rear dorma. This rear dorma also has been significantly reduced in size. So that's what this comprises, it's a conversion of an existing pair of buildings. This is conversion to flats, it's in a primary residential area, so the use is wholly appropriate in this location. There have been lots of objections and I'm sure councillor Radford will talk through those with you and you may even have an objection over development. This is nine flats in two quite substantial properties. Your planning officer's report says that it complies with the space standards. So I would put to you that it's not over development, it does comply. It will provide a good residential amenity for future residents. There's also an issue of overlooking. The only issue would be the dorma extension. The actual rear garden, if we take away the outrigger, from the back of the outrigger to the bottom of the garden is seventeen metres. From the back of the main property, it's twenty seven metres. So overlooking issues, if this were a normal residential property, a dorma extension could be added in the roof. And actually, if we look at the new planning reforms, you can probably add one or two stories to these buildings under the prior approval and permitted development rights, but we're not going to get into that. But the facts are, the highway engineers, your highways officers have no objection to this proposal. The flats comply with national and local council space standards. There is a large garden that provides outdoor amenity space. Again, you've got car parking on site. Within one minute walk down Timworld Hill to Green Lane, you've got the major bus stops and bus routes. Cycle storage and bin storage is provided on the side. So I would put it to you that the change of use and conversion makes an efficient use of a building in a residential area that has not been used for twelve months and could not be sold as a working nursery. There is a presumption in favour of sustainable development, national and local. And I would put it to you that this is sustainable development in a residential area and it's creating residential units that people can actually afford. It's not an HMO, it's providing flats. So I would request that you approve the application. Thank you very much Chair.
And are there any other questions Linda?
I beg your pardon Chair, could you, I couldn't hear that.
I wonder if there's any questions for you Linda?
All right, thank you.
But so far nobody's indicating. So I think we'll pass over now to councillor Radford, who I believe is speaking instead of councillor Lake, or are you both speaking?
Both will be speaking Chair.
Right, okay, so if we can have councillor Radford and then councillor Lake.
Chairman, Mike, could you so kindly put up a frontage photograph of the building as it is currently? I think that gives people a context of the style of the buildings in the area. Chair, I'd ask Members to bear in mind that Woburn Hill and Timworld Hill are two incredibly unique streets off Green Lane. They are not the traditional taller terraces of Moscow Drive and Kremlin Drive we're familiar with on the committee. And they're not the more modern streets, relatively modern streets. They have actually still got an incredibly, almost semi-rural character. And in some ways, we actually do regret that the council lifted the conservation status area off the two streets which was there. They weren't formally in the old Swan Ward until the last boundary review, but they knew the area well. In fact, to be honest, my first, my second house in Liverpool was actually in Timworld Hill. So I do know it well. The two properties we've got are essentially like the format of two traditional larger houses. And what doesn't show on, I think does show that the changes, the whole area of the street, if we start converting to a large number, particularly single bed flats, is changing the area and the character of the street. We have a council objective, we keep saying at council meetings, I think Joanna Simpson repeats it, with vigour, every council budget, we need more high quality, high value properties. And here we are in an area of high value, high quality properties, actually downgrading the properties to smaller flats, it seems to undermine our own objective. We have had our local, our former local chief inspector, Dave Heron, actually said, the high level of itinerary flats and HMOs in the area is creating an environment that attracts greater crime. I don't want to emphasise that because I think we've got a bit of a modicum between an HMO and very small flats. It does take flats into the ground space of the ground. You've got large gardens on all the properties going eastward along Timworld Hill. You've got some very small, close of more modern houses in Magnus Close to the side. We do have parking problems, the. We do have parking problems, the infinerous sandy bars of the highways team are putting double-yellow-line restrictions refreshed along the junction of Timewold Hill and Green Lane because we do have congestion problems, people trying to regress out of the Timewold Hill because it includes residents of Timewold Hill, Timor Place, Timor Close and Magnus Close, Key House Gardens. We have seen this committee intervene in a very positive way. And I can use the example, we had the prospect of a Berlin Wall-type frontage of apartments going to be proposed on the former Job Centre. And this committee, I think, took a bold step and said, we want to retain the large house character of Timewold Hill. They rejected the application and to this committee's credit, today, we have a series of five or seven larger three-story frontage buildings, which really have an add value and impact on the Green Lane frontage. And that was a decision this committee said, we just don't want to drill downwards, we want to actually improve the quality of the area. At the same, at the St George's pub, this committee did intervene and we put some very serious community interventions and we got community houses, larger houses built on the frontage of Green Lane, rather than, as the planning committee said, they would have accepted forty apartments. So I'm asking the committee to actually reflect what the local market is doing, what the council's own financial objectives are doing and what we've done elsewhere. We can get better quality developments, whether it's either renovating the houses back to residential use is viable, whether it's creating higher-quality flats, maybe that's an objective. But we don't need to take the gardens and intrus into the garden area. And lastly, I'd ask the committee to say yourselves, if you want to see the rapid erosion of family houses in a community that has got a real high propensity, families who live there for sometimes two or three generations, then open the floodgate to these sort of conversions and you'll see another area of instability built into an area that is actually quite sustainable at the moment. It is about sustainable communities, it's about creating a varied community. This is an overdevelopment, it's an overdevelopment we don't need, it's an overdevelopment that in fact, the local developments on Green Lane show you, there is a market for larger quality family homes, we've sustained that and this committee have actually supported it. As far as public transport is concerned, I'd ask you to bear in mind, if the people in the flats are going to be driving, they will need to drive. The only bus route going along Green Lane is the city route, it doesn't take people into the city centre. So you will, whereas we've supported, quite rightly so in this committee, we supported a nice quality apartment development at Somerset Place on West Derby Road and we took into account there'd be a low car usage because it was on the main route, West Derby Road into the city centre. The sixty-eight route is a circular route around the city, it would take people to Bootle Coal Dockyards, it wouldn't take people into the city centre. So there would be a higher car use here and there isn't the space for nine households' cars on this site. So really, it's about looking at the local details and drilling down to the market. This is the wrong development at the wrong place and I beg the committee not to open the floodgates on deteriorating Timewold Hill needlessly.
Thank you councillor Radford. I'm now going to invite councillor Billy Lake to come in and then we'll open it up for questions. So councillor Lake.
Good morning, Chair. I hope everybody can hear me. Yeah, just a couple of things on this one. First of all, yes, it was a nursery, sixty children. I think it was very useful that we saw a picture of what the property looked like in reality. It was, I think it's doubtful that there were ever a full capacity of sixty children in the place. But nonetheless, the point about it being a former nursery is that, as such, it was largely dormant outside of school hours. So this new development represents quite a shock to the current residents. Because what we're actually talking about here is nine flats comprising nineteen residents. Now, that could well mean in excess of ten cars on that property. There isn't sufficient space for that number of cars, as we've seen from the picture just a few minutes ago. They will spill out onto what is, although the road comprises large former mansion houses, the road itself is really quite narrow. The other thing is that it does comprise a loft and an extension, so it will mean a major structural change. I think it's undeniable that there will be overlooking of other property and I'm not sure that that has been fully addressed. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that from looking at the drawings, it would appear that flat number four has bedrooms and a living room but no kitchen. And maybe I've misread the drawings and I'll bow to greater knowledge. But if that is the case, well, surely that can't be right. The other thing on a more general point, there's been sixty-two objections to this property. It is actually one of four proposed changes in one street. That will, we know that there's already, the next item on the agenda is number thirty-five and we also know that there is a proposed children's home to be developed in the street. This is, this is a major cultural shock to people who were formerly living in a quiet backwater of Chubuk. And again, it represents the undermining of an entire community. No, it's not classified as an HMO, but the impact will be entirely the same. And once again, it's another step towards making Chubuk into an HMO ghetto.
Are there any questions for the two councillors on the points they've made? Well, I don't see any, so I'm going to hand over to our case officer and I'd like to also invite the highways officer after the case officer to comment on some of the points that have been made about public transport and parking. So the case officer, please.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, you've got a very detailed report in front of you. I think we've gone into some detail in the report in response to the very significant number of objections that have been highlighted there by councillor Lake. I think it is unusual to get this number of representations for a flat scheme. And as I say, we've tried to address all the issues as robustly as we possibly can within the committee report. You've also obviously had the presentation from the applicant's agent, which has outlined the proposal. So just to recap, this is an application to convert the property into nine flats and that is facilitated by a number of works to the building, most significantly, some alterations to the roof to raise the height of the roof, as you've heard, by a total of about naught point eight metres, together with the insertion of some roof lights and a dorma at the rear. And then you've got that single-story extension that again was pointed out to you in the presentation. In terms of the principle of development, again, there is some detail within the report about that particular aspect and I do acknowledge councillor Radford's and councillor Lake's comments about the sort of unique character of this particular street. It tends to be one of predominantly family occupation, albeit there are some other non-residential uses in there. And obviously, this has previously been a children's day nursery. It might help if we get the picture on the, sorry, the photograph on the screen as well while I'm talking through. Suffice to say, obviously, as a day nursery, it still retains the character of the residential properties and converting it back, in your officer's view, would bring back the properties into an appropriate residential use. The overall number of flats being proposed, in particular by incorporating the roof space, would not, in your officer's view, undermine the character of the area as a residential area. Indeed, your officer's view, I think, is that it would, as I say, bring back a property that is given over to a different use in the past. So in terms of the principle, your officers are satisfied that it is appropriate within this area. In terms of visual amenity and neighbouring residential amenity, again, that's been picked up in the presentation, there's been some concerns expressed about the relationship of the property to nearby properties, particularly at the rear. Again, that's highlighted in the report, it's a total of twenty-seven metres and I think that was reflected again in the presentation. So your officer's view is that the installation of the dorma and the rear extension will not give rise to any harmful impact on nearby residents. There are some conditions that you'll see on the report that suggest some obscure glazing in certain parts of the development and then that is to ensure the protection of amenity for nearby properties. The standard of accommodation has also been assessed in terms of your standards within the development plan and is considered to be satisfactory. I'm not aware that there is a kitchen missing. As far as I'm aware, all the, all the flats have all the necessary attributes to day-to-day living and therefore comply with the standards, just picking up there on councillor Lake's observation. And then finally, in terms of the highway and car parking issues, you'll see from the report, Chair, that particularly paragraph four point four, we pick up on this particular issue around car parking. There is a slight deficit when assessed against your SPD policies, but highways colleagues are satisfied that, given the nature of the surrounding area, that can be accommodated without harm to highway safety. So for all of those reasons, Chair, we are recommending approval, subject to the various conditions set out. And I'm happy, of course, to answer any questions that you or members may have.
I just want to see if highways do want to add anything before I invite questions. So is there anything you'd like to add?
Only to reiterate really what John's just said, though. I mean, he's explained that we're comfortable with the level of car parking that's being proposed. It's six spaces off-street for nine flats. It is an accessible location, there are regular bus services that run up and down Queen's Drive, connecting to Bootle and South Liverpool, along West Derby Road, that connects into the city centre and out towards Heighton and Nosley, and also bus services along Green Lane itself. So we're comfortable that it's a well-located site, it's accessible, particularly by bus and the level of car parking is appropriate for the area and the proposal.
Are there any questions? Councillor Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I'm just seeking confirmation, John. These flats are self-contained flats and it is not a HMO scenario, am I right in that?
You are correct there.
Right. And at this moment in time, that property is left vacant, am I right?
That's my understanding, it's not currently in operation as a day nursery. That's correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I need.
So I'm going to move that recommendation be approved, is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Just for purposes of the vote, which I can duck now, Chair, if you could confirm your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Mallett.
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly, councillor Juarez. Councillor Juarez has left the meeting now, therefore the voting in terms of those members who are present and entitled to vote are seven members in favour, none against. Therefore, the application is carried on that basis and we'll now move on to our next item of business, which is number nine on today's agenda and which relates to number thirty-five, Timewold Hill, Liverpool thirteen, and again, this is in Chubuk and Stony Croft Ward. Chair.
We'll have Linda Wright to address the committee as the agent. If you'd like to come in again, Linda.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you once again. I wasn't actually down to speak about this one, but to be perfectly honest, the issues are so similar, other than this is a semi-detached building, it's number thirty-five, it's the next one along the road. The proposal, as I'm sure you'll find out later on, is for four flats. Again, there is now four car parking spaces, you can see on your screens, four car parking spaces for this, no extensions in, well, there was only a minor extension next door. Again, large garden area. I'm sure if there are not already conditions on, then there will be acoustic insulation conditions and proposals for the flats in between number thirty-five and number thirty-seven. That's what, a long time ago, when I was a planning officer, I would have put that on there. Four flats in a large property, I understand what's been said by the councillor beforehand, but these are probably slightly more high-end and slightly more luxurious. They're still splitting a property into flats, but thank you very much, Chairman, I will leave it there.
I think that's helpful. I notice there's a lot of overlap on the planning notes on these applications that I personally got a little bit confused. But I'd like to hand over, if there's no questions for Linda, that is, I'd like to hand over to our case officer. I think councillor Cumming still has his hand up from the last item. If you'd like to take your hand off, Dave, thank you. Can we hand over to the case officer again, please?
We also have objections for this application, if I may please.
Oh, do we? I thought that the two councillors had spoken before. Sorry, do they both want to speak again, Mike?
Councillor Radford has indicated he does wish to address the committee.
Okay, and councillor Lake as well?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Councillor Radford then, then councillor Lake. Sorry about that.
Totally appreciate it. I know it's very difficult to manage an internet meeting, so really. Chair, I think this makes up on even more, when is this company not going to buy the whole street up and convert every single one into apartments and flats because it's picking off one building after the other? If you want to give a green light to undermine a most settled, higher-value market area of Stony Croft, it's not Chubuk, it's actually Stony Croft, then give a green light for conversion of every property and because that's what in effect you're agreeing to and you've got to draw the line somewhere, you've got a council budget meeting which says, we need high-value area properties to attract higher rate values, we want to get more professional people to stay in the city. And then you take a community like Timewold Hill and Woburn Hill, which was a conservation area in Stony Croft, not Chubuk. And then you say, well, we'll convert them all one by one into apartments. It's just absolutely foolish. It is counterproductive to everything you're saying about sustainable communities. Now, it just shows you how far out our highways officers are when they're talking about bus service on Queen's Drive. Queen's Drive is nowhere near Timewold Hill. In fact, we've got it alligated so you can't go through Timewold Hill up to Queen's Drive. There is the only one predominant bus route on Green Lane and that's a circular route. So you are going to have car, high-car usage and you've got another entrance, you've also got a Sea Cadet Hall there opposite. So you do have a bit of traffic there, which we've always accepted is a good community use. The nursery was not a heavy usage of vehicles because actually, the good thing, there was a large number of people who walked their children to the nursery, so that's a real good thing. But I'm really saying to you is, if you want to turn this into another Green Bank or Kensington Fields, carry on just waving them all through because that's what you're going to do and then you'll come back in six months' time. then you'll come back in six months' time and say, oh my God, we've created a community slum, what are we going to do about it, and when we do some demolitions, because you've got a large number of HMOs, which is effectively what you're just going to do is slightly upmarket HMO. When's it going to stop? And I think you're absolutely disastrous. It is about ignoring what's on the ground, ignoring what the market, these properties haven't stayed vacant for very long, there's normally a high turnover, you've actually intervened already on Green Lane to protect higher-quality market properties, and they've really worked. So, why are you undermining what you've done already? It's just absolutely reckless and foolish, and for highways, I think they ought to go back to some map reading classes, if it is not on Queen's Drive.
Thank you for your comments, councillor Bradford. Before I return to the Chair, can I just remind members, whilst I appreciate your frustrations in terms of dealing with specific applications, please ensure you show due respect for your officers in terms of their professionalism and assessment of applications, which are assessed against relevant local and national planning policies. Whilst there may be frustration, we do have to deal with applications in the relevant policy context, but we do appreciate and note your comments, but again, please show due respect to our officers and colleagues and your fellow members.
Do you have to see some map reading?
I'm going to invite councillor Lake, but before that, I'd like to back up what Michael Jones, our committed clerk, has had to say. So, over to you, councillor Lake.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, here we are at the property right next door, and the proposal says four flats, and I don't know if I'm having a bad day with drawings, John, but I think, looking at the drawings, the drawings show five flats, but again, nonetheless, I may be wrong, and will stand to be corrected. You're now introducing another nine residents, so together with, there is another drawing, John, I've seen that, but on the link, you'll see that there is a fifth flat on the drawings. Outside of the drawings, we're now introducing into this street 27 new residents in almost one go, and all the attendant comings and goings of that. And again, just to reiterate the point made by my colleague councillor Bradford, you cannot maintain that this fulfils the obligation towards sustainable and compatible communities. You're downgrading the rateable value of large homes, that we know there is a need for large homes. These properties never get a chance to get on the market, because they're being snaffled up by speculators, because that's all these people are, they're not willing to invest in the community. Indeed, the previous property was downgraded from the larger proposed plan, because they didn't want to make a contribution to 106. So, that tells you how much they're invested in the community. These properties, like every one of its kind, is all about speculators making money, and they're doing it by undermining historical communities. And I understand fully from my time in planning that we're not here to talk about emotions, for at some point, Liverpool City Council needs to address this moral point, because we are seeing our whole communities denigrated and historical properties of great worth undermined and lost forever to speculators. So, yeah, please consider at some point the cultural impact on the residents of this street, 27 new residents, and don't forget, coming shortly, there'll be another one at number 43, only two doors away now from 35, which proposes a children's home. Thank you.
Are there any questions? So, I'd like to hand over now to our case officer.
Thank you, Chair. Again, you've got a detailed report there, and you've had a brief presentation from the applicant. Just to clarify, this is an application now for four flats, it isn't for five. I think the images on the screen that have been shown are for four flats, and apologies if they are still showing five flats on the council's website. So, again, as the report makes clear, the principle of development is considered appropriate in this location. Again, acknowledge the points raised by both councillors, Bradford and Lake, but the policies that are currently applicable and national planning policy framework encourage sustainable development and the reuse of properties such as this in appropriate circumstances. So, the principle is considered perfectly acceptable. In terms of residential amenity concerns, the individual flats are considered appropriate in terms of their size and in terms of their relationship to one another. It is not considered that the proposed conversion would give rise to any other amenity issues for surrounding properties in terms of, say, overlooking or loss of privacy. And then, obviously, you've got a small section there, Chair, in relation to highway matters, highway colleagues are satisfied with the car parking arrangements, and that the proposal would not, again, give rise to any particular concerns around highway safety. So, again, Chair, the issues are very, very similar to the application that you've just addressed on the adjacent site. Just a couple of further additions in terms of conditions, if I may. Condition four, again, just needs clarifying in terms of the plan numbers, and then I'm suggesting two further conditions. One is that condition around a scheme of acoustic insulation to ensure the protection of an amenity for the adjacent semi-detached property, and then a further condition to ensure that the various works off-site that are included within condition two as part of the plans, such as bin stores and cycle parking, are completed prior to any occupation. So, subject to those slight changes, Chair, happy to recommend approval, and of course, answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Chair, we have a question from councillor Conception.
Hi, I'm Tony.
Thanks, Chair. It's not really a question, it's a comment, really. I mean, I understand the concerns that have been raised by councillor Bradford and councillor Lake, but we as a planning committee, we are a quasi-judicial body that have to make decisions based on plan and law, and some of the objections that have been raised by both councillors are not really material planning considerations, it's about emotions and cultural effects on the community, but we have to make decisions based on planning law, and I do know that every application that we get here, we have to judge it on its merits, and we've got a detailed report in front of us, and it's clearly, this is a residential area, and if all these applications comply with our policies that we have. And I do know that in a city, we as a city, do have a shortage of one-bedroom dwellings, there's a big waiting list for one-bedroom dwellings, so I think that you've got to take that into consideration as well, so we're not trying to undermine, you know, our tax rate base at all. What we're trying to do is decide applications based on their merits, and sometimes we get carried away with emotions and try to tell us that we should be doing something differently, but we have to comply with the policies that we currently have, and respect some of the views and the reports that we get from officers, they're doing a difficult job in difficult times, and I think that we should commend them for doing that.
Thank you, councillor Conception, and I welcome your comments, especially those about the quasi-judicial nature of this committee and the fact that we have to act within planning law, and a lot of the comments that have been made have been asking us to go above and beyond that. We have to consider our applications on their merits, the applications that are in front of us, we cannot be saying we want something different, we have to consider what is proposed. And on that basis, can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair, same for previous items of business. If you could just confirm your vote, please, Chair.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Marat.
Agreed.
Thank you. That concludes the vote on this application, the voting is seven in favour, none against, no abstentions, and therefore, the application is approved on that basis. Noting the comments made by councillor Bradford earlier on in today's proceedings, and given that we now have only one item of business left where we actually have speakers registered, can I suggest with the committee's agreement that we vary the order of business, so that we take next agenda item number 12, which relates to number 10 Corinthian Avenue? Are members agreeable to that? If you just nod on screen as well, for visual purposes, thank you, everyone, in which case we will deal now with agenda item 12. Chair, if I can ask my colleague in the office to display the appropriate visuals on screen at this stage, and Chair, as you are aware, we have a number of objectives present for this item of business, so if you'd like to bring those in, in turn, thank you.
Yes, so, we're having a presentation first, and then we'll bring in a number of objectives, and some of them I know have been online since about four past nine this morning, and that's why I wanted to bring this item up the agenda. So, if we could have the slide presentation first?
Thank you, Chair, that is on screen now. If we just have the case officer inquire to make some brief commentary statements in terms of the images on screen, before which we can then deal with the objections raised by a number of residents.
Yeah, just very briefly, Chair, obviously, you've got the images on screen, so this is the proposal to convert the property to a seven-bedroom property in multiple occupation for a total of seven persons. That is facilitated by the erection of a single-storey extension to the rear and a loft conversion with an additional window and some roof lights as well. So, you can see, hopefully, all of that on the plan that's before you on the screen at the moment. I'm not sure if there's any other further plans, if there are, can we just see those as well? And that's the internal layout, showing the disposition of rooms across the development as existing, I think, and then perhaps there's another set, yes, so there we've got the proposed layout of rooms, and as you can see, that's the additional single short extension at the back is shown on there, and then perhaps we've got another final set of drawings? No, that looks like it's it. That's all we've got. Okay, that's all I can say at this stage, and then obviously, I will respond more fully once we've heard from the speakers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, John. William Shortall, if that's agreeable, William, I'm going to invite Charles Dunn, Vicky Berry and Desmond Lennon, I think they're together, and Mauricia Dubekey first. So, Charles Dunn, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, good, yeah, I wasn't sure, I'm not technical at all, so, do you want me to start?
Is this Mauricia?
Yes, it is.
Yes, carry on then, Mauricia, I know you've been online for a long time.
Yes, yeah. I would like to read Paula Barker's response to William Shortall when he raised this matter with her regarding the proposed conversion to 10 Corinthian Avenue. HMOs are in many instances ripping the heart out of our communities. We only have to look across Epicten to see the devastating impact the unsustainable single-dwelling developments like this have on the wider community. I do not hesitate in supporting objections of this nature as an MP. We have a HMO 10 minutes away in Gensey Road, and multiple HMOs in Kremlin, Moscow and Russian Drive, 0.6 miles away from 10 Corinthian Avenue. We are currently living through unprecedented times with COVID-19 and its current infections increasing at an alarming rate, and our freedoms being restricted. It has caused for concern, therefore, that a multiple occupancy for seven unrelated individuals from seven separate addresses is being considered at this time, when we are trying to reduce the risk of infections. Kitchens and bathrooms are breeding grounds for bacterium viruses, COVID-19 being infectious and hard services up to 72 hours. The scientists are stating this virus could be still with us well into 2021, and a vaccine may not be available until the winter of 2021. Liverpool has now restrictions on households only up to family members of six. A three-generous licence being granted for seven unrelated individuals is unacceptable at this time. The applicant has displayed transparency in how they have proceeded with their proposed conversion for the following reasons. The notification of proposals to the residents of Overlow Road and the submitted plans were inconsistent. Sam Crawshaw was in agreement with me on this matter. The type of tenant is ambiguous. The applicant posting a letter through a residence store in Corinthian Avenue informing them that many of their HMOs have professional tenants. This is incredulous at the time of a pandemic, a GNP using shared facilities. Also, they will be using local contractors. I hardly think Rossendale could be considered local. They have shown blatant disregard to planning application regulations by failing to display the 21-day statutory notice in a prominent place informing residents of their intention to apply for a three-generous licence. This would have provided residents the opportunities to raise any objections in the closing date, commencing the building of the single-storey extension last week prior to planning application. How can residents consider the applicants are credible and responsible landlords when they have behaved in this manner? Finally, I would just like to say, only if councillor Shortall finding the proposal on his portal by chance on the 21st of July, and posting it on Facebook on the 21st of July, we as residents would have been unaware of the applicant's intentions. I only received my letter on the 19th of August, as I had contacted Sam Crawshaw.
Thank you. Now, I also have Charles Dunn, is he coming on?
Yes, I'm available, yeah.
Coming now, Charles, please.
Yes, thank you. Just like to reiterate what the previous complainants had said, and I understand that you've got to look at the regulations, and that's how you make the decisions. However, within the report, it talks about the increase of one from six to seven, and that having an insignificant effect on all issues. One in six is a 17% increase, so there's going to be a 17% increase in the chance of cars, 17% increase in the chance of rubbish being spilled out, 17% increase in the idea of antisocial behaviour. My wife is a professional and works in the National Health Service, and to say that people who are professional, the type of professionals that the applicant is looking at, would not have transport in cars of their own, is absolutely ridiculous. Within the NHS, there is a very, very attractive scheme to get cars leased to you by doing a salary sacrifice. So, to say that there would not be an increase in traffic in that is also a bit ambiguous. Further to things like rubbish, the idea of having a bin store on Overlow Road itself was originally put in because there was no access from the property into the gated alleyway. This has now been changed, I don't remember seeing this on any of the plans, but the gate that existed has been bricked up, and a new one will be provided behind the gateway. Therefore, bins could be stored in there, and there would be no need for the additional bin store to be there. If there is a bin store, and with there being seven individual people, who would be responsible for putting the bins out? It is not the job of the refuse collectors to enter into alleyways or to open up bin stores to clear them out. And again, if there's only two bins for rubbish provided, what happens once they're full with seven people in there? Will they, like we've seen in other examples, just leave rubbish by the bins inside the internal wall, and that would then lead to an increase in that, which we have had in this area, it's quite a significant that round from that house originally? So, while I understand you have to take into consideration planning law, I think some justification should be given to the complaints you've received regarding these other matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Dunn, if we can bring in our next speaker now, which I believe is...
Sorry, it's my fault, I have them unmuted. I wanted to invite Vicky... Sorry, it's my fault. I haven't unmuted. I wanted to invite Vicky Barry and Desmond Lennon. I didn't realise I was on mute. I know Vicky's been there for a long time. Would you like to come in and speak now? No, I can't. We need to unmute this one. Otherwise, shall I invite councillor Shortall to come in?
If you can.
I don't mind speaking while we're for your two objectives, if that's the case.
Yes, please, William, because maybe they've gone off. They were on for a long time, but they don't seem to be responding to my invitation. So if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks for giving the opportunity today, Chair. And I'm speaking on behalf of my two fellow councillors as well, councillor Calvert and councillor Miller, and also on behalf of our MP for Waver Tree, was Paula Barker. And let me make it clear, look, this is totally government policy here, you know, and there's not a lot the city council can do about granting admission for HMOs of six beds and under. There's not a lot, and I appreciate that. But that doesn't mean to say that our residents, and there's 64 neighbours objecting, 132 of our neighbours in the area, signed a petition against it. They feel uncomfortable with this, and they feel threatened by it. So they need a voice. So one of the things for councillors to object on behalf of their residents is you give those residents a voice. So, you know, it's all well saying, you know, there's nothing much we can do about it. But I think that there is need for a conversation around HMOs in Liverpool in a cross-party way even, to see how far that's going. Because there is this perception that there seem to be a creeping of HMOs all over the place. Now, there are things that we as a council can do, and there is an Article Four directive. But Article Four directives are not retrospective. They've got to be put in. We are putting an Article Four directive. So I want to reassure members of the public, there are things we can do, but they've got to be justifiable because the policy put in by government since 2010 really does give people carte blanche. Now, there's objections in terms of rubbish. And quite right, it says in the plans, I think there's four 240-litre Euro bins there. Who is going to put them out? It's a great question, because what I don't want to see in the future is nobody putting those Euro bins out. And then all we get is a mountain of black bin bags left outside in the street for people to complain about. And then I've got to pick them myself, John Calvert and councillor Miller, I've got to pick those issues up and then report them to LSL. And so that's not what I want to see in the future. It says in the rules here that the restrictions that they're only going to be seven people. Well, there may well be 14 people. They might have partners staying over. So there could be 14 people. That puts additional pressures on the rubbish that's going to accumulate household rubbish, again, forcing those Euro bins to fill up quicker than they should do, and no one taking them out. And then you end up with black bin bags on the ground. And also the point of parking, there is parking pressures there. I don't believe that those people, especially if it's going to be let to professional people walk in the car, and what will end up with, which is something that the city council are having a policy about, or trying to do something about, is pavement parking? Because it's on the corner of a bend, this HMO. And we'll have rows of cars blocking the pavements. I can just see it now because there's trouble just around the corner of Derby Lane, and there's pavement parking, the issues that we have to pick up all the time. And there's a lot you can do about pavement parking, other than asking people not to do it. You've got to catch them in the act of doing it if it's policemen. So that could be a future issue there. We're going to have bin bags dumped outside, and we're going to have pavement parking, like blocking people getting past, especially people, you know, who use wheelchairs and scooters getting past. I use a wheelchair myself, you know, so it makes it hard to get round there. And for, you know, mums and dads pushing prams, it's going to make it hard. So, you know, there are issues, and I appreciate that this will go through. I get that, because the other two HMOs went through, and this one will go through. But I want to express that our residents are angry about this, and there needs to be a conversation here. And I don't think I've missed anything else, other than to say that building work went on. There are restrictions here that's been put on about the building work, about the noise, about the dust. But it was already going on, and the tenants were very angry. They knew nothing about it. They've seen this building work getting done on this house, and they weren't told nothing about it. And it was only as it got on. And I unfortunately missed some of the stuff we could call up because I actually wasn't on the planning list to get sent out information. That's since been resolved, that issue now. I'm on the actual planning list to get sent out planning stuff. But I proactively look myself there. So we do need to have a conversation somewhere along the lines about HMOs in Liverpool. And I thank you, Chair, for giving me the time to speak.
Now, I'm aware that Vicky now has got a hand up and is ready to come in. But in the meantime, I wanted to raise a point myself, and I can see that councillor Cummings wants to raise a point. My point is about what we get with our planning agenda. We get very, very detailed notes. We get notes about all the due procedure and due process that's followed. And people are coming in now, bringing forward objections that have come from councillors. Now, according to the notes, there was an objection from councillor William Shortall. There aren't recorded in our notes any other objections from any other councillors or any MP. I'd like to make that clear. So in advance of the meeting, our planning members have not had those notifications. As far as we're concerned, due process was followed over advertising this. I don't think there have been any slip-ups there. Our case officer may be able to expand. But in the meantime, before I invite Vicky Barry, and who we tried to get in before, I'd like to invite councillor Cummings to speak.
Thank you, Chair. It'll just be quite short. Just to respond to... I just a question, and then you can speak, okay? Just a question to William. William, as you know, as it's well documented, I am no supporter of HMOs. Yes. Excuse me, I'm speaking at the moment. If you just...
I made it clear, the procedure is that councillor David Cummings is now speaking. They will be followed by Vicky Barry, who I invited in before, but we couldn't hear you, Vicky. You'll get your chance after councillor Cummings has already spoken.
It's very, it's very simple. Thanks, Chair. Again, William, it's well-known and documented that I do not support HMOs. Yes, I have to quote what councillor Conception said. We have to go with what the protocol, the legal protocol. And just two issues which you mentioned, which maybe can be addressed when you talked about the Euro bins. Well, the owners of the property can let the residents know about the Euro bins and arrange somebody to get those Euro bins out. And the other issue about the parking on the pavements, surely yourselves as councillors can deal with that and have some parkings on the pavements to see what you can do about that. So that's just a point of reference from me, and my hands are tied as well. So I fully concur with what you're saying, but I refer back to what councillor Conception said.
No, I'm inviting now Vicky Barry. No one else has been invited to speak. Vicky Barry, along with Desmond Lennon.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, I can.
I'm Desmond Lennon. I'm speaking in relation to this. Thank you very much. Sorry about the issues where we couldn't get on before. I've lived at 32 Corinthian Avenue for the past 16 years. And as a resident of the street, a neighbour of all the people involved in all of this, I've got great concerns, along with my partner Vicky Barry, about the proposed arrangements as far as 10 Corinthian Avenue is concerned. This has been dealt with by the council on a piecemeal basis. The notifications of the proposals were sent out on a number of different stages. And I only became aware of it on the 8th of August, when a lady who lives at 17 Overlow Road, which is most directly behind the property, came along with a petition inviting signatures to see what was going on about this development. And it's snowballed since then, and 130 of people have signed a petition objecting to it. And further 36 people have signed a petition. That petition is not mentioned in Simon Cranshaw's report, which this committee has in its possession at the moment in time. We believe that the proposals adequately in any way failed to address the concerns of local people regarding the impact of this development, the impact it will have upon the people immediately surrounding that property, particularly the people behind, people who are living on the streets nearby. This is a residential area. It is a stable area. There's been no developments like this previously. I echo the thoughts of councillor Rudge and councillor Lake about the impact of HMOs upon a community. In a letter sent by the developer to people locally, the developer said that this development's going to be targeted to professional people. Professional people are ambitious. They will move on. What happens when the professional people run out? Who's going to fill the gap then? The property will still have to be serviced, so the landlords can maintain their interest in it. This is a big house. It has been transformed from a five-bedroom residential house, as it is for a family, into a seven-bedroom, separate identity residential development. We believe it'll have a very negative impact upon the local environment, upon the local community, upon the interest, wellbeing and welfare of local people. And if the council has any sense of obligation and duty, it should have it so that it can consider the interests of local people, consider local people's welfare, consider what local people aspire to themselves, let alone having the hindrance of something like this in amongst them. The slippery slope, as mentioned by councillor Radford earlier, is something that may now be visited upon this part of Tewbrooke and Stonycroft. And it's a concern for me. It's a concern for the people who signed the signatures on their petitions. It's a concern for all residents in this street. Is it adequate in terms of the security concerns? People move on. What happens then? The element of risk of crime? All these matters are supposed to be considered adequately by the council officer in consultation and consideration of local planning law, national planning law guidance. But it looks as though the real interest of the people most directly affected and concerned by it have been swept under the carpet. And what people living around here think, other than one person who appeared to express an interest and favour of it, has been dismissed altogether. And that's what I think is so sad about all of this, that local people who will be affected by it aren't given any adequate and proper consideration. So I strongly object, and entirely in support with the two councillors and views they've expressed about the previous applications in Tinwood Hill, and also the people who have signed all the petitions, the two petitions which have been provided to you. And thank you for listening to me.
All right. Well, thank you for that. But let's be clear, the two councillors before were objecting to things in Tinwood Hill, not this one. I'm sorry, that's it now. We're heading over to our case officer, who will explain matters of procedure.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Can I start with picking up the various points that have been raised by the speakers and by councillor Shortall? This is obviously an issue that you as a planning committee, members of the planning committee are very familiar with. But I will take you through the reports and the various issues that arise. But I think it's helpful if I just sort of try and address some of those issues that have been identified first. So in relation to consultation, there is a detailed section in the report which states that the initial notification was to a total of 37 people, properties in the area. And then there was a further round of consultation that was undertaking, following some amendments to those of plans. And all those responses that we've had are listed within the report. So they include the reference to the representations made by the Old Swan Ward councillors. They also refer to the individual letters of objection. They refer to a petition about 132 people. And they also refer to the solicitor's letter acting on behalf of one of the residents. So all of those are set out clearly within your agenda papers. And in relation to some of the issues that have been raised by the speakers, I think, having listened to them and having looked at the report, my view is that they all identified and addressed within the committee report. So in relation to the concerns around the current COVID situation, and the fact that these people will be sharing facilities and so on, and the risks that arises, that is addressed in paragraph 5.4 of your report. And it simply says that any household, any individuals will be subject to the same public health rules as any other household. So that is a matter for the individuals who would be staying there to address themselves. In relation to the concerns about bins, the plans clearly show there is space within the development to allow for the provision of four bins. That's identified at paragraph 4.5. Your officers' view is that the responsibility for putting the bins out is the same as it would be with any other type of residential development. So it's down to the individual owner, sorry, the individual occupants of that property to ensure that bins are put out on bin day in accordance with the usual rules that we all adhere to. And then obviously, picking up on the last point that I wanted to pick up on, the lack of parking associated with the development. And again, that's addressed within the committee report. The issue of pavement parking in particular, again, that's an issue that would be ordinarily addressed through the sort of parking enforcement regime that the council has. I mean, parking, pavement parking is obviously becoming a wider issue. But it's not something that we can specifically address as part of this planning application. So going through the report, Chair, again, you're very familiar with the issues around HMOs. We've set out why we think the principle of development is acceptable in this location. Clearly, the concerns of local residents are material. They are considered in the process. But equally, your officers have to write reports which reflect planning policy and government advice. Government advice is very clear that the presumption in favour of development, sorry, there is a presumption in favour of development, and effectively, the default position in considering applications is for approval unless there are material considerations that indicate otherwise. So this proposal is in accordance with the policies within your unity development plan, and broadly in accordance with the provisions on the draft local plan, whether or not we've said so in the report. We're satisfied that in relation to design, because of the physical extension, and the roof lights would not be harmful to residential amenity. And then there's a short section, Chair, that deals with the highway issues arising from the development. Again, your officers are satisfied that, given the type of accommodation being provided, our experience of these types of properties is that they tend to have low car ownership. So for all of the reasons set out in the report, Chair, we have come to the conclusion that this complies with the current policy regime and have recommended approval accordingly, and subject to the conditions set out in the report. Happy to answer any further questions, Chair.
Are there any questions? So I do, normally councillor Shortall, we don't invite further questions from anybody except planning committee members. You're not a member of the planning committee, but I will allow you to ask your question, seeing as you are a member of Liverpool City Council. So would you like to ask a question, councillor Shortall?
Yes, thank you for that. I just want to stipulate here about the owners of who puts the bins out. And we could just really clarify that more in terms of planning permission that stipulated in writing or a note on the planning permission about that, because that's my one point of concern, really, getting those bins put out, and the emphasis that it's on the individual themselves to do it. The bin then won't come and touch before them, because I can see that as a future problem. Thank you.
I don't know if you'd like to come back for us, John, but we did do everything that was statutorily required, is my understanding.
Absolutely, Chair. I will respond to the point that councillor Shortall has raised, and I hope it is addressed satisfactorily. So condition six, and I'll read it out, any waste generated to be discarded as refuged or recycled shall be kept within the curtilage of the premises and shall only be placed outside the premises on the appropriate refuse collection day. So this is a fairly standard condition that your officers will seek to attach to these types of application. And I think that hopefully will address the concerns that councillor Shortall and the residents have around bin storage. That's about as much as we, as a planning authority, can do in relation to that issue around bins.
There seems to be no other points. I'm going to move that a recommendation be approved. Is that agreed? Seem to be no other points. I'm going to move that a recommendation be approved. Is that agreed? Michael, I'm waiting for you to come in here now. Michael Jones? We cannot hear you. I don't know if there's a technical hitch now, but I cannot hear anything from the council chamber.
Hello?
Who's trying to speak?
Hello?
Yeah, yes, councillor Radford.
Can you hear me okay, Chairman?
I can now, but I could not hear anything sometime.
I think we're all struggling with the IT as I always do. Page 159, I think it's quite helpful the way the report was written out because it actually shows the configuration by floor. And in this case, unlike other cases of HMOs, we've got a high proportion of virtue uniform on suite bathrooms. So I think that answers the public health issue that councillors have raised. I think that's helpful. The one report that I find absolutely mind-blowing is on 176. I think when we get told the report addresses the issue, I think the description would be that the report dismisses the issue or evades the issue would be more accurate. Because we've got seven HMA rooms which are being told by the applicant are to attract professional employees. It is substantiated by the fact that those rooms are larger than our minimum standards and are on suite. So that's a positive comment. But if we accept they're going to be seven HMO properties, of which more than one is a double bedroom, to believe that there is no on-street onsite parking. And then the on-street parking is going to be on a difficult junction. Now, I'd like us, can we, because because I wouldn't like to be accused of having lack of map reading skills, could we put the local map up? We'll map up because I think this will highlight an issue that I don't think the highways department have picked up on. I was trading the RF to drop.
I actually, we lost all communication for a little bit. I actually moved to vote on this. So now we're still taking further questions from members. And yes, we must include persons from members. So could the case officer, all the highways officer?
On the map there, we actually see a clear indication. You've got the major road Derby Road, Derby Lane coming through. Corinthian Avenue is the feeder road to go to the local school. It's the prime route into the local school, which is on the right-hand side. You're not talking about a normal residential street. You're talking an access to a local school there and a children's centre, a combined school and children's centre. You've got the Coptic Church. And I'm going to be honest, I was involved in the transfer of ownership from the Church of England to the Coptic Church at St Paul's. We do have a lot of complaints and I think we have to take them as well. You know, you did buy a house near a church. What do you expect? On a Sunday. But we have a high usage of the Coptic Church, which I think is a tremendous good news. You've got local shops along Derby Lane and on the frontage of Derby Lane opposite the property. And you've got no on-street parking. And to suggest that's not going to have a parking impact, I think is absolutely negligent. And therefore, I don't think the highways report on 176 answers the question. I think it evades the question. You've got a Gable End property, seven properties with a higher standard than most HMOs, and that's a good thing. You've got not just single bedrooms, but double bedrooms. And you've got no parking on a Gable End. That is, I think, actually dangerous. We took the same view on Whitland Road that it wasn't safe to have a high-intense HMO on the corner. In fairness, unlike Whitland Road, this has, this has better quality accommodation of the upfront. I've got to be honest with members. But I think on a highways issue, we should reject this application. We are, we are adding to congestion, adding to what something is not good is not good. Putting up with, oh, well, it's just another one is not an answer to a problem with congestion. And when it's the feeder road to the local school, I think that really is not where we should be as a council.
As I said before, I've had to take this late because of the breakdown in communications, but I had actually requested a vote. But I will invite the case officer, our highways officer, to comment on the parking here. But I would remind councillor Radford of what the Sebar Committee thought. We need to have due respect for our officers who have investigated the situation. And an argument is, may not be an argument that you're happy with, that there is only one extra person to be considered here.
Right, when it comes to respect.
So no, you're not coming back here. I've invited the highways officer or the case officer to comment, councillor Radford. Can I hear from our officers, please?
I have to respect the conclusions they've come to. I can respect an officer. It doesn't mean I have to respect the conclusions they come to. I do not believe this report addresses the cumulative impact on a dangerous spot. That is not disrespecting the officer. It is having a different view. And that's quite a different issue.
Chair, Michael in there?
Yeah, thanks, Andy.
I have invited you to, so please do, Andy.
Thanks for the opportunity to respond to that. I mean, you know, the same assessment applies to all applications in particular HMOs. You know, our experience shows that people that live in HMOs tend to have lower levels of car ownership. And whilst we're not saying there won't be anybody who lives in the HMO who might own a car, we wouldn't, certainly wouldn't expect everybody that lived in the HMO to own a car. And what I would do is I would draw the comparison to the existing premises, if it were to be used as it was as a five-bedroom house to what is being proposed now. And if it was a five-bedroom house, you could reasonably expect a large family to live in that house. They may have grown up children. They could have two or three or four cars. And so the levels of demand for parking associated with a five-bedroom house, you know, in my, in my view, could potentially be the same or even more than what a seven-bedroom HMO would generate in terms of parking demand. In terms of the, the space that's available in the surrounding area for on-street car parking, we're aware that it's a corner property. We're aware it's near to the junction of Derby Lane. But that doesn't mean to say that the individuals who do want to park in that area would be parking on those corners. Everybody has a responsibility to park in a safe and respectful manner. We wouldn't expect drivers to park on the footway. We know they do, and we have regimes in place to deal with that. But we would expect them to find a space where it's safe for them to park. And our knowledge of that area is that there is some space available on-street to accommodate any parking demand over and above that which the current property might generate as a five-bedroom house. So we're relaxed. You know, it's an accessible location. We're comfortable with the proposal as it stands.
Thank you, Andy. Now, I want to move on now. Can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed? And can Michael Jones now hear me?
Opposed.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Radford has indicated he will be opposing and may well wish to move an amendment before I bring councillor Radford in. Councillor Radford, please turn your microphone off a second. I'd just like to remind members of how we actually consider reports before us and the different waitings, which we need to place and what's placed before us today. Councillor Radford disagrees with the various assessments laid out in the case officer report. And obviously, the case officer report reflects the professional comments and experience, as indeed those are comments of highways and planning officers on this application made during debate. The comments made earlier are not about taking any weight away from the comments made by councillor Radford. Or indeed, the professionalism of the opinions expressed by our officers as well. What I would ask members to ensure is that you please respect each other's individual opinions on this. Disagreement is perfectly acceptable. That's not what we're trying to discourage in this committee. What we are asking is show due respect for process and show due consideration for the policy context in which this committee has to operate as a quasi-judicial body. But equally, to show that when we as a committee are considering applications, that you have full regard to the balanced issues placed before you, both in the case officer report and as councillor Radford has alluded to, as indeed of the various objectors today, that they disagree and can set out very reasoned reasons as to why they disagree with the case officer assessments. So it is very much, as ever, a balanced assessment for yourselves as members. With that in mind, those comments, councillor Radford, you do indicate to make an amendment.
If I may, Chairman, move an amendment, the application be rejected on the ground of inadequate parking in a key busy locality access road to a local school and children's centre. And there isn't sufficient on-street parking in the vicinity on the Gable End. That's my grounds of objection. And I'd like to move that, if I may.
Thank you, councillor Radford. That is customary practice for amendments. Does any member wish to second that? If so, please indicate and also unmute your microphone and state for the record. That amendment is not seconded, councillor Radford, therefore falls, and we will revert to the chair's original motion, which was to approve the recommendation. And therefore, the voting will be conducted in the same manner as previously. Therefore, Chair, your vote, please. Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Cummings? Thank you, councillor Hanson? Thank you, councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Marat?
Agreed.
Thank you. And lastly, councillor Radford? Thank you. Just for purposes of the record, councillor Radford has indicated his dissent, and that will be recorded by name. So to confirm the outcome of the vote, that is seven members voting in favour, one member voting against, which is councillor Radford. And on that basis, the application is approved. We will now therefore revert to our original order of business, which means our next item on today's agenda will be number 10, which relates to Princess Drive and Finch Road, Liverpool 14, which is in U Tree Ward. As I indicated earlier, this application has no speakers I'd favor or against. Therefore, to assist your consideration as a committee, can I ask colleagues to display some images on screen in terms of giving indication of the development site? And I would ask the case officer to comment to assist as well.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, you've got a site plan there which shows the location of the proposed telecommunications mast. You can see that it's opposite a small parade of commercial units on, quite close to a junction on a fairly busy road. If we just go to the next slide, we should be able to see more closely. And then the next slide hopefully will show an image of the mast, if we can just get to that. But you'll see from the report, Chair, that this is an application for a 15-metre-high monopole. Your officers' view is this type of mast is fairly common now within urban locations. Given the size of it, given its location, given the surrounding, street furniture and context, it is your officers' view that this would not be harmful to visual amenity for the reason set out in the report. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Well, I don't see anybody indicating. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Cummings?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy?
Oh, agreed.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Marat? Councillor Marat? In which we'll move on, councillor Radford? Thank you. In the absence of councillor Marat there, for the voters, in seven members in favour, none against, and in councillor Marat's absence, his vote is not recorded. The application is therefore approved. We will now move on to agenda item 11, which relates to the grass verge outside Owen Drive at Speakhall Avenue, which is in Liverpool 24, which is in the Speak Garston Ward within the city. Again, as indicated previously, there were no speakers I'd favor or against. So similar to the previous item, I'll ask my colleague to display images of the application site, together with some visual aids to support your consideration of the application. And I'd also ask the case officer to comment at this report on the proposals.
Thank you, Chair. As you'll see from the site plan in front of you, the red square indicates the location of the proposed mast. Between the mast and the site on the right, which is being developed out for housing, there's four lanes of traffic plus a very wide central reservation, which is tree-lined. And there are also tree lines on the other side on the grass verge to the residential. In terms of its visual appearance, on the left-hand side is industrial units, so its backdrop when viewed would be against an industrial location regardless. So it's, it's that they are industrial-looking structures, but their backdrop is against an existing industrial structure. So we're happy that in visual amenity terms and in sighting terms, it's the most appropriate location for it. The mast that you can see on the screen at the moment will be removed within three months. So there will only be one. And if you could put the next slide, that's the new mast. So clearly, you can see it's bigger. But again, it's got that backdrop of commercial activity. So we're happy that it's an appropriate location in this particular instance. Happy to recommend approval and answer any questions, Chair.
I don't seem to have any questions for you. So I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Thompson?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Cummings? Thank you, councillor Hanson?
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy?
Agreed.
And lastly, councillor Radford? Thank you. That concludes the vote on the item of business of the voting members present, which are now seven. Seven members have voted in favour, none against, no abstentions. The application is therefore agreed. And we will move on to our next item of business, which is, I believe, number 14, and which relates to number three, Nomice Road, Liverpool 15, which is in Waiver Tree Ward.
Michael, can I come in? I don't think we've dealt with 13, One Chapel Avenue, Liverpool 9, have we?
Apologies, Chair. I revert back to my notes. It's just on a different page. Apologies, Chair. In which case, we'll revert to number 13, Number One Chapel Avenue, Liverpool 9, Ward, Birkwood. And similar to our previous items, we don't have any speakers for or against. My colleague has kindly displayed some images on screen. And please, I'll ask the case officer to summarise for you. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Chair. Again, you've got the site plan there, which indicates where the property is. It's a single-story building. Looks to have been in previous use as a bank. Hopefully, we'll have some photographs of it in a moment. You also see from that plan now on the screen that there is a quite significant area of hard-standing pavement in front of it. So the proposal is simply to use this building as a drinking establishment. It used to be within use class A4. I think that's very recently changed now, so it is a sui generis use. And that will need to be corrected on any decision notice. But nonetheless, the proposal would allow for the use of the property to be used as a drinking establishment. From the report, you'll see, Chair, that it's within the established local centre where this type of activity is considered acceptable. You'll also see its relationship. That photograph is very helpful. It's separated from the return street by the existing building currently in use as a blind shop. And then obviously beyond that, you have residential properties. So in terms of the impact on residential amenity, your officers' view is that it would be sufficiently separate from those residential properties. And given that it's in an established centre, we think that the impact would be acceptable in terms of the comings and goings. We've also sought to control the hours of operation through the imposition of hours conditions to a closing time of 11 o'clock. So for all of those reasons, Chair, we consider the proposal acceptable and have recommended approval subject to the conditions set out in your papers. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions? Are there any in the chamber, Michael?
No, Chair.
No. Okay. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, Chair. Your vote, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you, and lastly councillor Bradford. Thank you, just to confirm the votes, that is seven members, which is unanimous for the members' voting, none against, no abstentions, the recommendation is therefore carried, and we'll move directly on to item number 14, which relates to number three Norwich Road, Liverpool 15, in Waiver Tree Ward. My colleague will again display some images at this point, because again, we do not have any speakers either for or against the application, and I'd ask the case officer at this point to comment on the proposal before you.
Thank you, chair. Again, this is an application for the conversion of the property into one for multiple occupation. I think the important point to understand in relation to this particular application is that this committee has previously granted permission to use the property as an HMO for a total of 11 people. The application now before you actually has a reduction in that number down to nine, so it is an improvement in terms of the overall numbers, and that obviously increases the quality of the accommodation in terms of the room sizes and so on. So for all of the reasons set out within the report, chair, your officers consider that this is acceptable and have recommended approval, subject to the various conditions set out. Happy to answer any questions again, chair.
We have a question from councillor Cummings. Go ahead, please, Dave.
Thanks, chair. John, my issue with this is Liverpool City Council have a mission statement about supporting family housing within Liverpool, and this is an accepted residential area. So how does that mission statement concur with this application?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I think the straight answer is that the mission statement is not planning policy. The planning policy is what is set out in the unit development plan at the moment, and then obviously that will be replaced, hopefully very soon, by the new local plan. The new local plan obviously considers issues around HMOs and talks about tightening up where we can through Article 4 directions and so on, as I'm sure members of this committee are aware. So I would say that, again, as has been discussed before, that there is always a balance. So on the one hand, we do, as a council, want to encourage the continued growth of higher-value properties, but equally, there is a need to provide a range of accommodation types, and that includes properties in multiple occupation. So sometimes there will be these sort of tensions between different parts of the plan and your policies, and this is a case in point, we are obviously through this application considering the conversion of a family property into a multiple occupancy one. I would simply say that the planning policies that you have, perhaps, well, they allow for the conversion of this type of property at the moment. Whether or not the policies will be tightened up through the local plan process, if the inspector picks up on that issue, remains to be seen, but at the moment, the policies allow for this type of conversion, notwithstanding any other mission statements that you refer to. Hopefully that answers your question.
I'm listening to come back here.
Of course.
John, I understand what you've explained there, but my interpretation of what you've said, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is Liverpool City Council's mission statement is worthless and flawed, given the protocol that we have to work with. And the second point is what you mentioned about higher-value properties, about the embracing and valuing of them undermines having a multiple occupancy in that particular property in a established residential family living area.
Right. In relation to your first point councillor Cummings, they're not the words that I would use. Obviously, the mission statement is a different type of document, it is not a planning document, it clearly has worth, it clearly has an important role to play in the way the council conducts its business, but it is not part of the suite of planning policies which your officers and this committee has to take into account when it's determining applications. As I've said, the decision has to be based on the unit development plan, and some weight can be given to the draft local plan at the moment, given the stage that it's at, but obviously that is limited, and that's made clear in your committee report. So the issue again around trying to encourage high-value houses, my understanding again, that there is nothing set in stone in terms of the planning policies in the UDP, but again, it's an aspiration, I think, to deliver these higher-value houses, to increase the council tax base as much as anything, but the report sets out the policies that you as a planning committee need to take into account when determining this and other types of applications. So I just stress that it's the UDP, the NPFF, the National Planning Policy Framework, and the draft local plan, together with other material considerations such as the objections that you as a planning committee have to take into account.
So on those two issues, John?
Thank you councillor Cummings, I haven't invited you to speak as yet.
Apologies, chair, apologies.
John, how do you finish what you had to say?
I have finished, yeah, yeah.
If I wanted to come in here, because my understanding from being a schoolteacher is we always have mission statements, they are very aspirational, they were more to do with what we were aiming at than what we could immediately achieve, and I would say to you that as we know on planning, we're very, very much high-bound by what Westminster also hands down to us in terms of legislation. Now, I would invite you to come back, councillor Cummings.
Thank you very much, chair, apologies for that. I accept what you've said, John, and I know that you have to work in the legal boundaries. As a representative of Waiver Tree Ward, I have to give the opposing point of view, and I'm using the mission statements of Liverpool City Council for my opposing argument. I recognise that that doesn't go into a legal boundary, that is a statement of intent. However, given that situation, I'm here to represent the Waiver Tree residents, so therefore I will not be supporting this application.
Any other questions? Councillor Kennedy.
Point of order, none of us are here on the planning committee simply to represent our local residents. We are here in a quasi-judicial committee, and we're here to take a judgment on planning applications within the boundaries of planning law. I would suggest that someone who says they have already made their mind up because their job here is to represent their local interests on this committee should not be voting on these matters.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. So in future, maybe there should be expressions of interest over some of these matters. Councillor Cummings.
Thank you, chair. As it says in the notes, communication was made to me by the proposed proprietor, I did not engage in that. So that really is my answer to you.
Thank you councillor Cummings, and of course, that is correct procedure if you do want to vote, but you should not engage and express any opinions to the applicant or people associated with one side or the other. So I'm not judging that you in any way behaved incorrectly on that score. Councillor Thompson. Councillor Thompson.
Can I ask a question of councillor Cummings, please?
Yes, councillor Thompson.
I wanted to ask, I understand that councillor Cummings hasn't had any communication with the developer, and I wonder how much discussion he has had with local residents, because I think that might also have an impact on his position on this particular item.
Would you be able to answer that councillor Cummings?
Yes, no problem. People have made contact with me, and I've said I'm on the planning committee, so I cannot commit, I have to be neutral.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or points that people wish to raise? Okay, can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, chair. Councillor Bradford in the chamber has indicated he wishes to oppose your motion, and I believe may be moving an amendment. I'll revert to him now.
Chair, if I may, just want to move in.
Yes, carry on.
On the basis of highways, there is no on-house parking, it's a congested area already, I think on high grounds you shouldn't be accepting it. The premises itself, actually to their credit again, a bit like the previous one, has got total on-street, so the conditions of the property are good, but I just think it's absolutely wrong. We're going to have a large number of households, many of them will have cars, and there isn't adequate parking, just compounding a problem in a congested street.
Thank you councillor Bradford, does any member of the committee wish to second that amendment? If so, please indicate and also state clearly by unmuting your microphone.
Councillor Cummings, are you going to speak?
Yes, I fully concur with councillor Bradford.
Councillor Cummings, could you just confirm clearly, are you therefore seconded councillor Bradford's amendment? Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, Mike, I second councillor Bradford's amendment.
Just for purposes of members' presence, in terms of comments made by councillor Cummings earlier on during the debate, councillor Cummings has indicated for purposes of his conduct in the meeting that he has not had any contact or engagement with the developers to the application site, that whilst he has had communications from local residents, he's indicated to those in response that as a member of the committee, he's not able to comment either way and must remain impartial. On the basis of councillor Cummings' assessments, and notwithstanding comments and concerns which other members of the committee have raised, at this indication, there does not appear to be any interest declared by councillor Cummings or relevance such as to placing within an application wherever you will not be considered impartial. I would however remind members that this is a very fine line and is a question of personal judgement for individual members, and if at any stage you consider that your opinion is potentially fetid, then you may declare an interest at that point. At this stage, councillor Cummings has not done so, however. Therefore, the amendment as stands therefore becomes valid, and we will therefore vote on the amendment. So with that in mind, firstly, your chair, your vote on councillor Bradford's amendment.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Conception.
Against.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Against.
Thank you councillor Cummings.
For.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Against.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Against.
Thank you. And lastly councillor Bradford. Firm for purposes of clarity, voting is two in favour of the amendment and five members voting against, therefore the amendment falls on that basis. I will now conduct a reverse vote in terms of the chair's original motion. Therefore, chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you, chair, councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Cummings.
Against, and could you register that, please, Mike?
Thank you, that's recording, councillor Hanson.
For.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you, and lastly councillor Bradford. Thank you colleagues, the voting is five in favour, two against, councillors Cummings and Bradford, their dissent is recorded by name, the application is therefore approved on that basis, and we'll now move to our next item of business, number 15 on today's agenda, which relates to Longmore Lane in Fazakley, which is in Liverpool 10, again in Fazakley Ward. For this item of business, just to remind colleagues, we have no speakers either for or against, I'd ask my colleagues to display images on screen, which are now coming visible now, and I will invite the planning officer to comment accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, chair. I'll take you through these very quickly. Obviously, you can see where the location of the mast would be, so it's within the central reserve of the, sorry, of Longmore Lane, see more clearly on the plan before you now, and then hopefully we'll have an elevation in a moment. But as you can see from the report, this is a mast of 17 and a half metres in height. Again, when compared with the surrounding street furniture and given its location, your officers are of the view that this is acceptable in terms of its visual amenity. Happy to answer any questions, chair.
Any questions?
A question, chair.
Yes, come on, Michael, have you got somebody in the chamber?
No, chair, just to confirm, we have no indications.
Okay. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, chair. No amendments have been indicated, therefore your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
That concludes the voting on this item. For purposes of those members who were present, all vote in favour, i.e. six members, therefore the application is agreed on that basis. We will now move on to our next item of business, number 16, and which relates to Childall Road, Liverpool 15, in Waiver Tree Ward. Similar to our previous items, no speakers either for or against, therefore the images are coming on screen now, and the case officer is now invited to comment accordingly.
Again, chair, very, very similar, within the central reservation of a very busy road, again, it's 17 and a half metre-high mast, and again, if we can just go straight to the visuals, you will see the existing and the proposed there, so very, very similar in terms of the size and scale. Happy to answer any questions, chair.
Are there any questions? Are there any in the chamber, Michael?
No, chair.
So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Conception.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Cummings, please.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
And lastly councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Voting therefore unanimous of the six members present, and the application is approved on that basis. We'll now move on to our last item of business today, number 17 on published agenda, and which relates to East Prescott Road, Notty Ash, Liverpool 14, which is in Notty Ash Ward. Again, no speakers either for or against, therefore now images coming on screen, and the case officer will now comment accordingly to assist.
So again, chair, site plan which indicates the position of the proposed mast, so it's just off the, to the side of the dual-carriage way, so not in this case in the central reservation, but close to a very, very busy roundabout. Again, some sort of finer detail there, so the precise location. Again, if we can just go to the next set of drawings, so that's the existing context, and then we should have another plan in a moment which shows the mast, there we are. So again, chair, your officers consider that given the location, given the size of it, it would not be harmful in terms of visual amenity, and happy to recommend approval. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No questions from the church.
Thank you. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you, chair, your vote please.
Agreed.
Thank you, move to councillor Conception now.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Cummings.
Agreed.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Agreed.
And lastly councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
To confirm the voting is unanimous of the six members present, therefore the application is approved on that basis. Chair, your concluding comments, as that is our last item of business today.
Thank you everybody for your patience today. I was hoping we might have gotten away with a slightly shorter meeting, but it wasn't to be. I wanted to mention that we are going to carry on up to Christmas with having our meetings on a Wednesday. We've generally agreed that with the officers, even though there is one of my meetings that will be a clash, because I think...
a clash. Because I think there's been so many changes with the pandemic, that I don't want to cause any more confusion. There was a suggestion that we move one meeting back to a Tuesday so that I could chair it. But I've got two excellent vice chairs. So I know that one of them will step in for me on that occasion. And we'll keep it till every two weeks on a Wednesday, up until, I think it's the 16th of December. Thank you all for your patience and your excellent attendance. Bye for now.
Thank you, Chair. And to confirm, that concludes today's meeting of Liverpool City Council's Virtual Planning Committee. Thank you to members, officers and officials viewing proceedings online.